Okay, I'll take a motion to go into closed session. And move, is it, okay, Steve Martin? Just be watching. The Osborne? Okay, we're in closed session, we're just gonna go right, right next door.
We're trying out a new hybrid approach to our meeting, so please be patient with us. And now, I've, there's an added complexity of how we're gonna move through the presentation, so everybody, please be patient with us. Sir Chair, usually, we would look at the slip sheets and the consent agenda right before going into the meeting, so I just would wanna shake. Well, see you. Okay, so you want me to go right to my report then? Yes, sir. Thank you for reminding me to share my screen. Okay, the Chancellor's Report, our men's golf team served in first place in Region 16, third place in the South Central District Tournament. And this was their inaugural season. And I said that we have some avid golf players that might want to be assistant coach, huh, chief? Susan Blazer, our lineman instructor and coordinator, has been inducted into the International Hall of Fame. And I said, what's the big deal of the cake? But that's a lineman pole on that cake, and she was sent that in recognition of her accomplishment, so we want to celebrate Ms. Blazer. And we didn't clap for the men's golf team. We also want to welcome our incoming Faculty Senate President, Dr. Melissa Eaton, and we'll be hearing from her later today, so we're excited to have her. Melissa, I know you're listening, that's a great picture of you. And I want to make everybody aware that I have authored a book with my mentor, Dr. McPhail, and I also want to highlight that Melissa Giese had a contribution to the data that we provide in this book. And this will serve as a roadmap for us as we continue to work toward being an equity-centered institution, so I'll make sure that the board and key stakeholders get a copy of that. Administrators Association is providing a report.
Good evening, Presidents Gags, Trustee and Chancellor. Thanks for giving me the chance to share some of the community events that have been to sale this past year. And this will be my last time to address the board. I would like to share with you a virtual event sponsored by MCC Online that was held April 27. Starting last fall, MCC Online has offered a series of workshops and events focused on equity and inclusion. As a capstone event for these workshops, we set up a video viewing of the film Coded Bias. Coded Bias explores the ways in which individuals' biases have been hardcoded into our technology. The event was set up as a Zoom meeting with each participant having the link and password to view the film on their own device. Two faculty facilitators, Dr. Cynthia Hettleston and Patrick Dryden, provided an introduction to the topic. During the film, the Zoom chat feature provided a place for dialogue and reactions. And afterwards, Dr. Dryden presented some of his research on the topic and facilitated further discussion. The researcher narrating the film became interested in coded bias while working on a system that required facial recognition software. The software had difficulty detecting or verifying her face until she was able to put on a white mask, a white face mask with slits for the eyes and mouth. The film goes on into the various and surprising areas of applications and development of artificial intelligence, and the impact of these applications are having in our society, particularly the impact on people of color. With the number of people working from home, the increased use of technology, and the heightened racial tensions in play right now, the topic of the film drew a lot of interest. Over 50 faculty, students, staff, and administrators participated in the event. The discussion was rich, and it was gratifying to see the various parts of our community openly sharing their experiences and thoughts. I'm encouraged that we may be able to provide more of these events next year as well, and thank you.
Thank you, and I'm so, yeah. Thank you for your leadership. I wasn't sure, I thought you had one more month. Okay, well, I was planning to celebrate you next month, but I'll celebrate you now by thanking you for your leadership and your leadership with MCC Online and the great work that you're doing. I appreciate everything that you've done for representing the administrators this year, so thanks again. The Faculty Senate have asked to, it's not, it was off-rotation for their report, but they've asked to provide some comments, and so now I will turn it over to Melissa.
Good evening, can you hear me? I assume that's a yes, so Chancellor Beatty, Presidents Gags, members of the board, faculty, staff, administrators, and publics. I am Dr. Melissa Eaton, a 13-year anthropology faculty member at MCC. It is my honor and privilege to be representing faculty as Senate President during the upcoming academic year. After a very challenging few semesters, I'm excited for the upcoming fall as the Wolves return to campus. I requested the ability to address you tonight off-schedule while I'm off-contract and out-of-state so that I could provide the shared governance voice for faculty members concerning the standards of conduct policy on tonight's agenda. Thank you for providing the opportunity. I submitted in writing a resolution by the MCC NEA Union Council regarding the non-fraternization language in standards of conduct policy. Reading it would exceed my time, so I trust that you have or will soon read it. I will begin by stating that the MCC faculties support the creation of a board policy that protects our students and employees from inappropriate and exploitative relationships. The proposed wording, though, is so broad in scope and is framed in a firmly heteronormative and cisgendered framework that it would force an MCC student worker who dates any other MCC student to disclose or out their sexual orientation and their relationships to their supervisors and to human resources. It must be recognized that the policy implications to the LGBTQ+ community are very different than for someone like myself, a cisgendered married woman whose own relationship would be exempted from mandatory disclosure. In light of MCC's strategic themes of equity, diversity, and inclusion, we must be aware of disproportionate and harmful impacts that the broad non-fraternization language would have on underrepresented LGBTQ members of our community. A few months ago, the Chancellor's Policy and Review Committee, CPRC Small Group, which included members of Human Resources, the Chief Legal Officer, and faculty, exercised shared governance and collaboratively crafted a version of the standards of conduct policy that supports and protects everyone at MCC, including the LGBTQ+ employees and students. While almost all of that final product was adopted in the proposed policy, the non-fraternization language was not. In their resolution, the MCC NEA Union Council respectfully asks for the Board of Trustees to reconsider their position and instead pass the standards of conduct policy language that was crafted by the CPRC Small Group that protects students and employees from potentially exploitative relationships while also being sensitive to a historically oppressed and marginalized community. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Melissa, for your comments. That concludes my report.
Our consent. Item. Item 2.4 is board policy lodging, there's four policies in that. And I'm gonna pull out item 3.50020BP, which is the standards of conduct policy, and it will stand alone. The remainder of those will stay in item 2.4 on the consent agenda unless somebody else wants to pull off one of the policies. Anybody have any question? On process. Again, the starter consent. Item 2.4 is board policy, there's four policies. 0BP, which is the standards of conduct policy. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded? Is there any discussion? Which item number, Mike? 2.4. Okay.
A question, are we intending on maybe having a staff person be the custodial of records?
If I, if I may, I think everybody's supposed to push a button on the microphone when you're speaking so that the virtual audience can hear you, for example.
You have more familiarity and oversight of the records within those departments.
Right, and you know, we, like every meeting, we're either changing or crafting a better way of doing these policies. I think it's a good idea to keep a record of attention of all changes. And do you think part of this could be maybe reducing some of those older policies?
Part of it is to make sure that we go towards electronics, not have as much paper records and not wear any compliance or follow the state's Secretary of State's retention guideline.
Very good, all right, appreciate that, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Record retention with all those photos of you in Bucaycus from 1980, Mike.
That is right, I think they should be somewhere where.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, I'll take a, so we have a motion. And any further discussion? All in favor of the consent, say aye. Opposed? 50020BP, Dr. Beatty.
This is standards of conduct, thank you. We are bringing forward a standards of conduct policy. The standard, we don't currently have a standards of conduct policy, and it includes a number of things as well as non-fraternization, but also ethical standards for employees and other social media and how they manage themselves as employees. It also highlights consequences of not following the policy. This policy went through, as previously noted, shared governance. There were two, at least two, broad CPRC meetings. In addition, there were three small session meetings with the shared governance group. They presented some, they presented language, and there were four lines that were not accepted in in the current draft that you have, and I'm recommending it for lodging.
Motion passes, we'll go on to item 3.2, Dr. Beatty.
On March 28, 2019, the MCC Board of Trustees approved that MCC enter into an educational agreement with St. Joseph to provide them with higher education at the community college level. We entered into an agreement with, through adult basic education programs, articulated programming, with Missouri Western, as well as the school district, and our own courses that we offer. I am extremely proud of the leadership of both Dr. Tayon Lee and Dr. Larry Rudeau as Presidents of Maple Woods in getting that site up, running, and the teams that worked tirelessly to get that, to get that site up and running. And in fact, we had 400 students headcount registered last spring. What are we in, summer, yeah, in the spring, which is Herculean in a pandemic year. In addition, we had 25 graduates from the Hilliard, specifically for those programs at Hilliard. But although St. Joseph is within MCC service area, MCC and North Central Missouri College agree that NCMC shall now be the primary community college provider for those school districts in Buchanan County. And this is just an example of us continuing to work together as community colleges throughout the state. And we have a MOU that puts forth what I have described, and I'm recommending approval.
I'll take a motion to approve. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded, discussion. I'd like to thank publicly Barbara as well for her hard work on some of this. And just to appreciate, show appreciation, Barbara, for you for doing that, so thank you. I'd also like to note too, again, to everybody's hard work. About members, the railroad was supposed to go to St. Joe, and they turned the railroad down, and that's why Kansas City's Kansas City and St. Joe's St. Joe. So, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we'll go to item 5.1, Treasures Report.
There is the budget and some budget workshop information would, I'm gonna move to that that supports the vote for the finance report.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, Presidents Gags, and board members. This evening, I take the opportunity to update you with the fiscal information for MCC as well as then provide information about our budget process and where we are with the budget and the proposed budget. So, this particular graphic, you should be familiar with, that bring your attention to the lower right-hand corner, the 74.4%, just so you know that the calculated target is at 83.4%, and we are at 74.4%. And what I'd like to express is that MCC is promoting a conservative, prudent, frugal spend approach, and it is clearly reflected in the numbers as I present to you this evening. Although MCC is obtaining less revenue, as already mentioned, we are also reducing our expenses, and we'll go into much more detail as we present the budget information. But I wanted to show you the cycle, more specifically, the lines which are the expenses. The expense line, the yellow line is our current line, and you should see that for most of the year, we have been below the previous year's expenses. And then the revenues, you see, it's, we are progressing very well in collecting the anticipated and expected revenues. And I want to point out easily at this point is this is the cycle that we project for the entire fiscal year. And so one of the questions that may come up during the budget discussion is, is how are we gonna land for the rest of the year? So I take this opportunity to point out, if you look at the last two years, which don't have blue bars, that are the last two months, that they'll do not have actual blue bars, you'll see the projections for expenses, 7.5 and 11.8. If you tally that up, that's just under $20 million. What you'll see eventually is, I will come back to that, so I want you to kind of keep that in your mind that we're projected expenses for the rest of the fiscal year. If all things hold the way they are, is $20 million of expenses for the rest of the fiscal year. That is correct. Yes. So, I want to remind the board, or take this opportunity to remind the board of our primary revenue sources. These are the sources for the general fund, which makes up 73% of our operating, or 73% of our overall budget. It is the operating budget. The three primary sources are, of course, state aid, property taxes, tuition, and fees. So what are some of those cost aversions that we've successfully put in place? And what are some of the projections, and what have we actually attained? So if you look at, is, we, we here at MCC have been doing a budget recapturing. Budget recapturing has focused on two primary areas, the part-time staffing budget and expenses and the operational. And then the other side is the full-time position frosting, where we have not opted to fill certain positions over a period of time. We are expecting or projecting that we will be able to do cost aversions of up to $4 million. So this is, this is the bar that I bring you back to, is, is this is the cumulative, and made it multicolor, just so we kind of refer to some of the things. But if you look at the total revenue date, more specifically the orange bar, you'll see that we are at $102 million. And you look at the expenses of 78.1, which is the far right, the dark blue. If you were to subtract expenses from revenues, this is cumulative to this, to this, to this date, you will see that that difference is approximately $23.9 million. Again, going back to the cyclographic where I've mentioned that it was $20 million to get us through the fiscal year, we are saving, we are, at this point in time, all things staying equal, we have $23.9 million in revenue not committed to expenses. We could cover the entire, the rest of this fiscal year if all things remain equal. That's, that's correct. And I guess what I also wanted to point out is, is that did not take into account any other revenue that we would capture for the rest of this fiscal year. It was a small amount, but there still is that. We usually do not use operating funds to pay down debt. What we can do is, we could certainly look at our fund balance at the end of the year to see if, if it's advisable to do so. So, it is not a practice or best practice to use your operating funds for the year.
We said, we set up a process where we have 60 days cash on hand, right?
Correct.
And then anything at the end of the year, above and beyond that, as a board, we can decide if we wanted to, to do it, Holmes is suggesting, or do some other program.
Right. What we would recommend is, is we look at the year-end audit to actually see where our net position is. And once we figure out, if you'll recall, last year, we were upside down. We were in the unfavorable category. One of the things that you're gonna see is, is, and this is where we will capture some of those indirect costs from HERF, as well as actually recapture some of those expenses that we lost last year. We're gonna actually bring it back in this year. It'll be, it'll influence the fund balance. And then at that point in time, we could certainly then look at, is where, where's our net position? And then decide, do we want to invest any of that to pay down debt? So then, I guess the short answer is, is this is looking at our operating cash. What we would suggest is, you look at our net position at the end of the fiscal year to make those kind of decisions. Does that make sense? Please.
You raised an interesting point, and if I understood, there isn't any of the, let's just call them tariffs dollars, except expressed in this.
That is correct, this is operating budget.
So it's not showing up as revenue?
That is correct.
However, do not those dollars offset some operating costs? So isn't it affected, shadowed in these numbers?
It does, but it's, it's beyond, it's beyond our operating budget. So for instance, to kind of give you an example, is, is we are, we have been successful to go back and recover the state withhold that happened in 20, at the end of 2020. That fiscal year is closed, but we've been able to recapture those dollars. Those dollars will go to the fund balance, will go to the, our net position. So what we're presenting here is, this is our operating. Those HERF dollars will influence our net position at the end of the fiscal year. Does that make sense? So they're not, they're not affecting our operational at this point, or they will, but it's gonna be minimal at this point. Where it will have an effect is on our total fund balance or our net position at the end of the fiscal year. Does that make sense? Right. Right. I mean, what kind of compound that is, is we were very, we were very aggressive in doing HVAC. I mean, that, we're looking at that, it would have been out five, six, maybe 10 years. What we, with the HERF dollars, we were actually able to increase that schedule and actually do it sooner. So, again, that's not necessarily operational, that's really kind of looking at our maintenance, repair, deferred maintenance. So, you know, I hate to confuse people, but this is predominantly the general fund, our operating 110. Does that make sense? Okay. Do bet.
Congratulations on that, that's awesome, by the way. Do you think we should continue to maybe be frugal? Since, until maybe we could look at enrollment kind of coming back around?
Well, absolutely, I mean, as we look, go into FY22, I mean, we look, if everything pans out the way it's going, all indications show that we will end the fiscal year in a favorable position. But now, we'll have to take, start taking a look at, what does FY22 look like? The proposed budget you have for going before you, as we speak, and we'll be, we'll be bringing back in June, the adopted budget. You're absolutely right, you know, what does that picture look like? What does enrollment look like for the fall? You know, sure, as we let time progress, we're gonna get a better picture. But you're absolutely right, is, is when we come back and we do the net, our, our, our net position, that's when I think we need to sit down and take a look at it, saying, okay, do we want to buy down debt? Or do we want to be conservative and wait and see what the, what the next fiscal year looks like? You know, what are some of those factors that we want to bring into play? So again, I want to remind the board, this is what we do, is, is we do, we take a look at the fiscal, our fiscal impact and our composite financial indicator. So, in this particular case, our CFI is, I pointed out, is, is so you'll see that with, with the, with the DASB 68 factor in there, we are at 1.12. Without it, we are at 4.0. And just so, to remind you, is, is anything above 1, HLC, does not flag you as having a need for any type of review, so we are above those zone limits.
Jermaine and Holmes is, on that slide, that is, that's probably one of the most important from a fiduciary standpoint as a board. That is, that's probably one of the most important from a fiduciary standpoint as a board. If those ratios dropped and it triggers an automatic HLC survey, which is, is our kind of governing body. And so that's why we, we look at this, I don't know, Don, every six months or so as a board to make sure our ratio.
So the other, just to add to that is, is when we look at our fin, our net position, our final standing. If we opt to leave dollars in our reserves, those CFI, that CFI will go up. So that's, that's one of those factors that we want to take into account. How do we want to utilize some of our funds that we have available to us? So let's take a look at the, now we're going to jump into FY twenty-two, some of the revenue assumptions. So what do we project out there? Well, you may have heard this is, it's on the governor's desk, so it's. We use that little caveat. It's not done until all the signatures are in place, all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. State appropriations, we are projecting that we had anticipated about eighty, hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The new number is eight hundred and forty thousand dollars that we, we are anticipating to get from the state and state appropriations. The local tax levy with the addition of detachments, our net increase to our tax levy will be approximately one point seven million dollars. The big question mark is, of course, is the enrollment, which all indications still indicate it's decreasing. We can turn that or we can slow that down. That'll help us develop a better picture. However, we, I do want to remind the board that we have a two new tuition and fee model that goes into place. That may have some impacts, some favorable impact on that. We'll, we're still trying to develop that picture of how that will impact us. Revenue generating contributions. We are projecting a decrease of at least four hundred K. In the presentation, you will see here that, you know, Concord is leaving. That's a source of revenue. The board approved the sale of the NHS building. That's a revenue for leasing. So we're taking into account some of those decreases. Okay, cares herf, there is a minor influence. And that's why when you asked me, is, is, is the herf dollars influencing the operating budget? It is based on how we spend it. And if we spend it, certain spends are qualified for us to allow expensive indirect costs. And we can capture those dollars. So it all depends on how we spend the dollars. We can actually capture some indirect funds in that regard. And then final revenue projection will be proposed, are being proposed here in May. And we will have the, we will be bringing the adopted budget to you in June. What are some of the expenses assumptions? Again, we've put the dollar numbers to it. I won't necessarily go through the litany, but you'll see is, is we're taking into account our contracted obligations, the staff compensation study, the minimum wage. We're taking that into account. Strategic goals, HLC accreditations, expenses are going up. The potential to recapture, we are not necessarily including in the budget. But the exercise, Chancellor has advised us to go through the exercise. We may, we projected nine hundred thousand, we may be actually go be able to go and get one point five million dollars through the recapture exercise. And what we're looking to do is see how we can leverage the herf dollars to allow for the recapture, especially like in the part-time side. And then the continuing frost of, of full-time positions up through December. We're projecting possibility of eight hundred thousand dollars recapture. So what does it look like? So overall, this is, is, once again, we provide the, the nice colors. The, the green bars are the twenty twenty-two projections. One of the things I want to point out is the twenty twenty-one, it is the adopted budget and included in the, in the revenue for twenty twenty-one, you'll see one ten. It's, that included the withhold from the state for two million dollars, which we then got back. So in essence, the true revenue is at least a hundred and twelve. So you, when you do that comparison, you'll, you should be able to see that we did get the withhold back. But this gives you a feel and a projection of where we are looking for FY twenty twenty-two with regards to revenue as then as well as expenses. No, though, though, these are the adopted budgets. Correct. The only one that's not adopted is the green, which is the projection. So, yeah. I don't recall offhand, but I think we can certainly get to those numbers. Well, that's, that's what we're projecting. So yes, we can get to the twenty twenty. Brittany, you know what the? No, it's actually going to be one twelve because we, we got the withhold back. So what would, in order to stay true, we're giving you adopted budgets, which are your officially adopted documents. Things change and we, we can get you the actuals. Yes, you don't have to know what twenty twenty actually, okay? We can get to that. That's not a problem. For revenue, right? Expenditures, okay, hundred and six for expenditures. What were you looking for? Did you want? Thank you, Patricia. To help? Okay.
Any other questions?
I've always wanted to ask this with the pandemic and everything, we're all sent home. Why aren't we saving a lot more money? Why are we still in the same number even though our, the classes have been maybe online?
Well, actually, I would, I would offer for consideration that we're saving at least.
Is that the frugal, okay?
Yes.
That, but that leads to my next question. What did we learn from the pandemic in the, in this? As we distance learned and we shifted to at-home classrooms? Is that something new that we could look at as well as in-person classrooms to maybe? I know at one point we continued, we talked about distance learning and reaching those people in those areas that may not have access. Were you able to kind of find out anything?
So we, we have learned a lot, especially in our processes, I would say, is in more so on the student services side in terms of how we enroll students and how that can be done more remotely. Where students don't have to come in, there's still some, I'm not sure we mastered the testing piece yet. But there's still some areas to learn. We also learned a lot in terms of the technology to support instruction, whether that's out virtually or in the classroom. Want to be careful in how much we offer virtually because we don't want to become an online institution. That's not our mission. But we have, I think, grown quite a bit in terms of what we are doing. What we can do in terms of our online campus and enhance the technology. Plus what we learned or what this phase gave us the opportunity to do was enhance the actually hardware technology that faculty are using in the classroom and our staff. I mean, you know, now instead of just calling and sitting at the office, what was that jabber or something that they had where it called? You know, no matter where they are, it can, you can receive those calls and better serve, better serve people. So I think there it's, there are a lot of ways we learn to better serve. We're working on our inclement weather will probably change in terms of having to shut down totally. There's some things that we might be able to do differently now that we know that there's some virtual possibility. So we're trying to carry over as much as we can that makes sense for the mission and the population that we serve.
Thousand was listed for minimum wage. It's a increase. I'm sorry, I should have asked.
Increase, yes.
Can you say something about that?
Sure, there was, there was a law that we have that organizations, state organizations had the option to actually uphold with increasing minimum wage. Am I articulating that correctly? Okay, you said no, you said no, ma'am? Wait, no, what? That, did I, we did, we, 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 we. Can I get somebody to help me?
Our state minimum wage.
Okay, we're increasing, we're, we're increasing the minimum wage. But there was a reason that we didn't increase it in January. And I'd like somebody on the staff to help me respond to that. That's.
It totals, I assume, a hundred fifty thousand.
It totals a hundred fifty thousand, yes. The actual dollar amount. Rosemary? No, are you, are you asking the hourly minimum wage to actual minimum wage?
Currently, it's ten. Currently, it's ten dollars and thirty cents. And we will, we have some employees that are not there at this point. That cost to bring everyone to ten dollars and thirty cents will be around the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're welcome.
Patricia has her computer on her lap, so she may have that information. Good point, trustee Reed. My apologies. That was Rosemary Martin, our chief human resources officer.
All right, any other questions on, on Don? Thank you, Don. Sure.
Okay, you were on five point one, trustee.
All right, that was the treasurer's report. I'll take a motion to adopt the treasurer's report. Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Point three, website redesign. Dr. Beatty.
Just moving so fast. In in March, we brought forward the web, website redesign, approved Vision Point Media. Once we got into the contract negotiations, there were two. Instead of them being subcontractors, they decided to be partners. And as a result of being partners, we need to now bring this back to the board and we recommend approval.
I'll take a motion to approve. Is there a second? Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes out of five point four. Dr. Beatty.
Single. Five point four, sorry.
Microsoft licenses.
Microsoft licenses. In March, I too learned that Image Quest is not able to deliver the it was an approved item at a previous board meeting. And Image Quest was the approved vendor, but once we get into the process of what actually needs to be done, they were not able to meet the specs within the RFP. And so now that caused us to go to the next, the next best solution, which is scholar buys and recommend approval.
So Dr. Beatty, we didn't do anything with the other one then?
No, we did not.
Right, I'll take a motion to approve. Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, good item five point five.
This is the single sign-on solution, something I'm so glad to see coming on. This is where you would have one sign-on to many different platforms that we have available in our systems and recommend approval.
I'll take a motion. Second, okay, discussion.
That's correct. It would just be one single sign-on. That's right.
Any other discussion? All in favor of item five point five, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes out of five point six.
This is another long-awaited improvement to our systems to have a non-credit enrollment system. Currently, we have students that have taken non-credit courses. We don't necessarily know how many we have. It's not integrated with our other systems. And this will help us with that and recommend approval.
Take a motion to approve. The move is seconded. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes out of five point seven.
Every year, we bring forward international student health insurance. And this is working with our broker, C-Biz, who performed a search for an insurance provider. And the Lure Agency is the best of those, receive those items received and recommend approval.
Take a motion. Second. Question, Mike?
Dr. Beatty, are the students paying a part of their premium? Are they paying their premium?
Yes.
Okay, and then is it something that's a part of their student fees or is it something they're doing as a separate? I think it's a good idea. I mean.
I'm going to ask Dr. Catherine Swanson, Vice Chancellor of Student Services, to address that question for us.
It's a pass-through fee where the students, the college collects the fee from the students and then pays the premiums on their behalf.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we'll go about five point eight.
Item five point eight is a collection of improvements that we'll be making across the district and asking and asking for increased authority. Before we have you vote on that item, want to give you some capital projects updates that will inform that decision-making. And well, actually, I'll just go straight to the enhancements that we are, an update on the Technical Skills Institute and enhancements. What I will say is, as I tee this up for them, is when we were going through the planning process, I had a number that I insisted they get to. It took them quite a while to get to that number because there was a wish list of things that they had. And in fact, we still haven't hit all of their wish lists. But with the successful campaign, it's given us an opportunity to add some additional items that you'll hear about at the end of this update. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Krishel.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty. President Skaggs, members of the board, opportunity to update you on the the projects that are progressing along, our three major projects. And I'd like to turn it over to our chief facilities officer, Mr. Jeff Olman, to give you that update.
Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, Board of Trustees. We're making great progress on the Advanced Technical Skills Institute. We will be construction complete on time in November and ready for classes in spring of twenty twenty-two. These pictures show some of the progress in the March board. You, you approved the replacement of the barrel roof structure. And here is a picture of that barrel roof structure now completely rebuilt. And the south restrooms have been demolished, the underground plumbing fixed. And the walls are back up and ready to rock and roll with the continuing construction from here. There are three categories of desired enhancements for the ATSI. One is some exterior enhancements. The other is interior lab enhancements and then the addition of lightning protection. And the total request is one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The exterior enhancements include adding a series of awnings and The exterior enhancements include adding a series of awnings and metal panels at the entrances that, uh, also making some ADA access improvements beyond those that we initially made in the, in the base project and some other reconfigurations to entrances and windows throughout the facility. Interior lab enhancements include the addition of more welding booths to support. We had twenty-four welding booths at Business and Technology Today. The base project builds twenty-four. This will allow us to increase that number to do some specialized training and testing that is desired by industry. It also will allow us to put more compressed air drops throughout the laboratories, more water lines, addition to network drops, and other enhancements that are gonna make the teaching and learning environment better within the ATSI. And lastly, the, um, the lightning protection, this is pictures of installed lightning protection in our veterinary technology building at Maple Woods. This lightning protection, while not required by code and not required by our insurance company, Music, uh, it is a bid option that we would like to now exercise. It makes sense. It's a best practice according to our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers. And really what it is gonna do is protect the equipment in the building to ensure that even in the case of a lightning strike, we don't have an interruption to instruction and, and learning. So those three categories of items, when totaled up, uh, what will be, what we're asking is a one point one nine five million dollars to add these items to the project.
I understand that a good deal of this was in the original intention and removed to maintain a budget.
Correct.
This is a pretty substantial increase. Are we anticipating similar increases, um, within particularly the building project for the Advanced Skills Institute?
They actually had other items on the list and I took. Um, one of them is, one of them, uh, for example, is a roof. And the decision is, we don't need to pay a independent con, the, the roof is okay. Um, but we don't need to pay, uh, McGowan Gordon to do the roof. And we can do the roof ourselves at another time, should we decide to do that. Uh, there was also LED lighting, um, requested. So if you look at this photo here, this stripe that goes down here, it's this blue striped stripe that actually lights it up and gives it a flashy, uh, look at night. I took that out, uh, of their request. It's not something I thought we had to have. I still think we need to be as conservative as possible. I'm not saying that those things would come, LED lighting especially, that that would come forward. A roof may at some point come forward, but, uh, those are, from what I recall, examples of items that were pulled off, that were requested. And the roof for sure, that could come back at another time.
Couple of points. Number one is that I believe we're on item number six point two and not five point eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. That, this was a, you're right.
So, uh, I wanna make sure I point that out for the record. Two, I, I appreciate the update. And I would also request, if it's possible for us to go and, uh, tour again, since it sounds like, and it appeared to be a number of substantial, uh, updates. I'm excited, this sits in sub-district two. Uh, I have spoken with a lot of staff and community members and folks who are excited about this and, uh, even folks who do some, uh, work with us around the community. And so I would love to see this. In general, my last comment, and this is more editorial than anything, uh, that relates to the change order, is that, uh, this, this happens. And I appreciate the diligence of staff, uh, as I think you've highlighted, Dr. Beatty, your, uh, purposeful cuts here and there, just to ensure though, uh, that we are getting a quality building, uh, one that will serve the students and staff and our community very well. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, trustee Reed, for pointing that out. My apologies moving, uh, through the agenda. But now you've seen it for item six point two, when you get to it. You were on five point. Yeah, you are paying attention, no question.
What was your name again?
We're on five point eight, trustee. No, no. Yes. That's correct. Yes, my apologies.
I would, I would respectfully ask for some, uh, detailed information. There's a lot of expenditures that are bundled in this particular item. And I would like for us to maybe get a high-level overview of the probably six or so, seven items that are listed on this, uh, on this item.
Oh, okay, thank you. There actually is a slide for this. And again, I appreciate your patience with me as we, that gives that high level that you're asking for. I have to search for it, just bear with me. Uh, no, one day we'll follow the plan that was set.
Slide of the presentation, uh, for the update. But I wanted to bring to the board's notice that, uh, we are doing some facility future planning. And so these projects will be coming forward to you in the near future. So again, I wanted to give you kind of an update. So the Broadway Plaza renovation, uh, we've already started the planning. I've already kind of communicated that the Concord moving out. We're gonna free up some space, we're gonna do some, uh, social distancing, space evaluations, et cetera. So you'll be seeing that plan coming to you in the near future. Uh, the print shop relocation, which we're tentative moving from the BT because we're closing out the BT and we're gonna sell that facility. Uh, we're gonna move it into the HSI. The science lab refresh and enhancements district-wide. Uh, so we've broken this up into two phases. The first phase is really looking at how we can refresh the existing labs to more modern standards, basically enhancement. And that's what we're asking for with regards to, uh, five point eight.
Okay, let's, we'll stop right there so they can take a vote. So, um, it's enhancements, I'm just trying to keep, now I'm on track. I'm trying to keep us on track. Uh, so it's enhancements, a phase one of a refresh. We'll be using three different sources of dollars in terms of deferred maintenance, grant dollars, which are from the federal dollars that would allow us to make some of the upgrades, like in air hoods and, um, so forth. And then, uh, grant dollars, deferred maintenance, and bond dollars, um, to do all of the labs district-wide. And you might ask yourself, why, what, what has changed from the time you approved these on-call to now? When we received all of these, uh, when we received these dollars, we had to strategically think about how we were gonna utilize them because of the guidance that comes in for the federal dollars. Once we determine that, we know what we're gonna get reimbursed for from the federal government. We know what then those one-time operational dollars we would have to use or what's left in the CARES funding that would be applicable to facilities, given the guidance that we have. We also wanna take the time to do this over the summer while, um, people are not here and that would give us the opportunity to do it. So that's why we're bringing it here and did not work it, excuse me, work it in the work session. And, uh, I think that's it. In my notes. Uh, there was a question, I think I would, uh, trustee asked me to clarify as well with this item that, um, when we did the original RFQ, there's no, when we do an RFQ, there's no, like, uh, it's for five hundred thousand dollars, which might, and now it goes up to a million dollars, which might give somebody the perception that, oh, I could have, I would have gone out for that had I known that. But that is not the case in how we do our RFQs. There's no indication of what that dollar amount, um, would have been. So we go all around Mary's Barn on five point eight to six point two to back to five point eight. My apologies to give you that background. If there's any other questions, I can take them.
I had an opportunity to tour, uh, many of our campuses. And this was one of the requests that many staff made to us, uh, along with trustee Martin, uh, that, you know, wanted some upgrades, wanted some things to our labs. And so it appears that this gives us a unique opportunity to do that. And so, um, grateful that we have these, uh, resources, um, uh, on our hands to, to, to do this. The second thing I would like to add or ask as a question would be if you all could talk a little bit about the vendors. I noticed a number of MBE, WBE, uh, DBE vendors that are listed and wanna be doing some of the work. And so could we just maybe, um, maybe highlight some of the, the vendors, uh, talk about maybe a percentage?
Yeah, so we do an RFQ to find the best qualifications. And you're right, we have, uh, quite a few. I know she digs it, I think Mark One. Those that are, uh, listed in there, uh, Blue Bear of Kansas and so forth. And I think when we did the total spend, uh, percent of WBE, MBE in this order and the total spend, percent of total spend was somewhere around five percent of the, uh, total spend. Um, that number doesn't seem right to me, but that's what I recall from the information that I was provided. The additional, uh, in the additional request. No, we just have specific guidance that we have to use to, uh, determine how we allocate those dollars and spend those dollars. There's no match that's required. And in fact, we just noted, were notified officially yesterday of sixteen-plus million, uh, dollars. And there's a little looser guidance associated with these. Uh, we can actually pay student debt. We can pay student debt with, uh, with the dollars in the preliminary guidance, but can't pay our.
You know, I drove in today and, um, I saw the pancake house in the old hotel there. And I remember once upon a time, we were talking about that place or those, um, and I, in the back of my mind, I'm, I'm looking at the housing problems that we're having in the city. And, and I, and I recognize a lot of students are out here, uh, trying to, you know, make their way. And, um, Don, maybe you can answer this. Have we ever considered creating housing for students?
You're reading our mind, trustee.
All right.
Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reed, thank you, Don.
Oh, I wanna remind some of trustees, you guys can ask this outside of the meeting. Some of these questions are very specific and they're not really board meeting questions.
Thank you, Holmes. Uh, any, any other questions on item five point eight? See none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we'll run item six point one.
Six point one. Uh, this is a lease agreement. We are expanding our square footage at the Port Authority of Ken, uh, Kansas, in Kansas City so that we can, uh, this is part of the plan of our transition out of the BT campus. This is where we will offer our assessments in, uh, a number of different industrial fields. There's no change in the original rate that was given to us, uh, with the additional square footage. And I recommend approval.
Take a motion to approve? The move and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes out of six point two.
I think we've talked about that.
And this is the, uh, change order?
Yes, this is.
I'll take a motion. Is there a second? Discussion?
District one, uh, this is one for the Advanced Technical Skills Institute.
Very good, okay. Um, I think that was my question. Thank you. Thank you.
Any, anybody else? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, item six point three.
Item six point three is the expansion. Okay, so now I have to go back. I'm gonna get this one right, because it's the only one that's left. Um, as you're aware, at the September, uh, board meeting, we approved the sale of the Northern Human Services Building, which is where our fitness center is. Now we will have to relocate the fitness center and reinvest in the Maple Woods campus to place the fitness center as well as additional workout facilities for our athletes. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Krishel and Mr. Olman to provide us with an update on what the, what's included.
Thank you, chancellor. This, uh, fitness center addition is going to be, uh, sixty-two-hundred square-foot addition to the north side of the sports training center, which is circled here in blue. It's on the south edge of the Maple Woods campus. The sports training center is next to our Vet Tech building. This is, uh, shows the existing sports training center, the Vet Tech facility, and where the addition will be located to the north of the existing building. In the addition is a men's and women's locker rooms, a gender-neutral restroom, about twenty-eight-hundred square feet of fitness and workout space. That is, uh, and, and that is the amount of space to house the equipment that is sized for our, uh, population there at Maple Woods. Where it says office, it's really not an office, it's just the check-in desk to get into the facility. There'll be, uh, coach, his offices both for women's softball and men's baseball, as well as a training room and then a small room, uh, conference room for, uh, coaches to maybe meet with prospective athletes, a little huddle space for four people. The top picture here shows what the addition will look like standing at Maple Woods' main campus and looking south at the north end of the facility. The fitness workout area is behind the four windows there, and then the locker rooms are behind the, uh, this area. This picture is of, if you're in the parking lot in between the sports training center and the veterinary, uh, technology building, looking, uh, at the entrance.
Okay, so that's an update on the sports training center. And item six point three is requesting architectural fees so we could begin to, uh, design and go through the design phase of that process. Uh, our, our, uh, fitness center is for students. Our, our fitness center is for students and employees. Yes. Somebody just did something. Okay, board calendar. Thank you, trustee Skaggs. The board calendar is, we're planning to have a meeting in June. We're not sure where we'll be, whether it'll be here or over in the boardroom. But we are having that meeting. Our goal is not to have a meeting in July. And then we would resume in August. And our statewide leadership conference is at the end of July, June. Our student success report is going to focus on our SENSE survey. And Dr. Swanson and Ms. Giese are going to present those data for us.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, President Skaggs, and members of the board. The Survey of Entering Student Engagement, or SENSE, is administered to MCC students at the beginning of the fall semester every other year. It's a national survey. And it's to give us a sense of what students' experiences are as new students coming into the institution. Each year, they add a section that is related to current issue or for additional research. And this year, they included questions about students' experiences with COVID. And so we'll be presenting those findings this evening. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Giese to take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Good evening, President Skaggs, member of the board, Dr. Beatty. Thank you for the opportunity to present the SENSE survey results this evening. As Dr. Swanson mentioned, that SENSE is a national assessment tool. And then we do this every other year. The first slide here talks about our survey respondents and the demographics. So you can see that the MCC student population of survey respondents varied slightly for our Hispanic students. They were underrepresented when you compare to the students who took the survey nationally, as well as being underrepresented compared to the MCC student body as well. We have about 12% Hispanic population. So SENSE has six benchmarks that measure different types of student engagement. And it allows us to be able to compare our behavior with other institutions. So MCC scores are in the blue bars. And the black horizontal line is the mark, the scores that represent the national SENSE cohort. And you can see that MCC scored highest in the early connections and the engaged learning benchmarks. And both of those were higher than the national average. The gray bars show our peer institutions. Our peers are similar size as us. And when we compare ourselves to our peers, we outperformed them in four of the six benchmarks. And then the green bar is a metric that allows us to look and see at what the scores were for the very top performing colleges. This slide shows the items, the specific items of the survey that were our highest student engagement. All of these items were in that engaged learning benchmark. The first item in this group was talking about how students had prepared at least two drafts of a paper or assignment before turning it in. And the remaining four items were centered around communication with instructors. So they said that they used an electronic tool to communicate with their instructor. They discussed assignments or grades with instructors, as well as discussing ideas from their readings or their classes with their instructors outside of class. So 87% of the students said that they received prompt feedback from their instructors on their performance. So this slide shows us the five items that were indicative of our lowest student engagement. And so the first item asked if students, if another student had, you know, learned their name that they previously did not know. The next item talked about working with classmates outside of class on class projects and assignments. And these last three items were asking about the frequency, so the usage of face-to-face tutoring. And then the writing math and skills lab, additionally, the computer labs. And I do believe that our virtual format may have impacted the frequency and use of those services. So students were asked, when you plan to take classes at this college again? And 65% of the students indicated that they would be taking classes within the next 12 months. And 25% of the students said that they were uncertain. I compared the data to 2018 results to see if there was an impact with COVID since 2018 was pre-pandemic. And I, I looked at the uncertainty. And our students answered, 21% of them answered with uncertainty to this question in 2018. So there was about a 4% difference in, in uncertainty that you could contribute to the pandemic. And they were asked if they had to change their, I shouldn't say had. They, we asked if they changed their plans about attending college as a result of COVID. And the majority of the students said, no, they did not change their plans. They had intended to enroll here. And then they were asked some financial questions. So they were asked to describe their household's financial situation. And half of our continuing students, and almost a quarter, so 21% of our new students, said that their household's current financial situation was worse than it was before COVID pandemic. They were asked specifically if they are struggling to pay for college. And half of the continuing students, and about a third of the new students responded that yes, they were struggling to pay for college. And then a smaller percent of those, 36% for continuing and 13% for new students, said that it was a result of COVID. And this final question asked students about their awareness to the support services that the college offered to help them with cope and stress related to the COVID pandemic. And 53% of our new students and 40% of our continuing students said that they were aware of these services. And I do want to note that the level of our students' awareness was higher than the national data for that. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Melissa.
It might be nice to send that out. I'd like to see those questions so we can maybe digest them a little bit more. Email, email those out.
Oh, yes, definitely. Are you asking for all of the questions?
Yeah, I think that'd be nice to see.
In the line of that, could you also, or do you have information?
I have a list of, no.
They're similar. They choose, the colleges in our cohort are similar scope and size to us. So that's how they identify the, the colleges. And so there is a close to apples-to-apples comparison.
So I, I do have a list of the institutions.
Thank you.
The only other thing that we had that we weren't able to go over is we want to give you an update on facilities planning. He began, Don began to mention that Concord is moving out. So we're going to be making some, doing some planning with Broadway Plaza and moving our print shop over. We're also looking at an ag institute and doing the startup planning for what might be needed to support that, as well as, there's one more on there. Automotive, automotive. We're adding paint booths and those types of things to build the automotive, build out the automotive institute at Longview. I wanted to just highlight those things because in future meetings, there will be requests that will be coming in as we continue to put MCC on the move. We moved around a lot. Did I include everything? Did I include everything? One other announcement, you may have seen me using my phone. I apologize, but we've been notified by the Biden administration that we're going to be a vaccine site next week. We may have a high-profile visitor along with that site. And so this is an opportunity for us to serve the community. The Biden administration, they reached out to me yesterday. They wanted to partner with community colleges to increase the especially populations that may have vaccine hesitancy to get the vaccine and market it appropriately. And the funding, part of the funding that we've received in this last round of funding actually has included in their specific language about using those dollars for this purpose. And in that case, so I'll keep you posted. I think it's going to be a very high-profile event. And we are so glad, as a community college, to be able to contribute to the community in this way and create opportunities to overcome vaccine hesitancy, increase the exposure of MCC, and I think some other announcements associated with how we might be able to support students who want to attend college. But more importantly, for all of our employees and all of our students to come on campus and get vaccinated. And I think, oh, another news flash. If the, assuming the governor signs the budget, the $3 million that we did not get year before last because of COVID, or last year because of COVID, the Moex sales, we are now getting, it's being recommended, it's in the budget, the 3 million. So if we, if, assuming he signs the budget, we're projected to get that 3 million. Also, that, that was a moment to, yeah, kind of stop and go. We also are, the coordinating board or the Missouri, whatever they're called now, do, they're recommending $855,000 for our Public Safety Institute through the gear funds. That's the government's, I mean, the governor's emergency relief something, funds. So that should be coming through as well. We expect it to. That one's being recommended. At your seats, you had the new, the latest version of the, what's that report called? Annual report, thank you. You also have the, the college read, what do you, what do we call that? The Common Read. Enrique's Journey. I think that was for this campus. It was their read. And next month, you'll have, I was hoping that those books came, but you'll have another book as well. Any questions? Did I make all announcements? Did I forget anything? Trustee Martin.
I think I'm speaking for everyone on the board to compliment you and everyone who took part in the preparing and conducting of a wonderful graduation ceremony.
Oh, yeah. Yes, and if there's something we learned is that the Starlight is an amazing venue for a commencement, as long as it doesn't rain. So we're, that's something we're hopeful that we'll be able to look forward to in the future. And we'll be providing an update. We knew that we had the budget workshop and so forth. We'll be providing a graduation update as we always do. It'll be in June.
I received, I don't know if others did, a copy of the summary of the graduation that was prepared by Communications and Marketing.
Yes.
It's a wonderful presentation. So kudos there, too.
Last thing, I want to thank the folks that are here making this happen. It took a lot for us to coordinate having a hybrid meeting. Something else we've learned through COVID, I think that we would absolutely try and keep afterwards. Okay. There you go. It's all about, it's all about, it's all about trustee Reed.